Let's call the meeting to order since this one isn't getting ahead in five minutes. All right, let's have a roll call.
Steve Hallwack.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Meelavellus. Trustee Underdon here. Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
President Rowan.
Here. This is the Thursday, April 18th, 2024, meeting of the community at the Hall. We are not live streaming this meeting, but the video recording will be available on the village YouTube, YouTube channel. First item on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting allows for those in attendance to address the board about non-agenda items. I'll ask the public comments on agenda items be made that all comments are limited to three minutes and I'll notify the speaker when the time is up. If there are anyone who wants to say anything that's not about the agenda. No, okay, the next item on the agenda is review and discussion of a draft comprehensive plan. And I'll ask the planning chair, who's Schubert, who's here, our development services director, Taylor Baxter, and the testa representatives, Lee Brown and Francesca Lawrence to present. So take your way.
All right, aye everyone, Lee, take it away.
Good evening. It's a point in the process that I think that people recognize as a potential turning point to allow us to move forward from where we have been. The agenda that we're trying to get to will start with a very brief recap of the purpose of why we're doing this and through ultimately the next steps. In my cover memo, I think I tried to emphasize the fact that the comprehensive plan is an aspirational, not regulatory tool. One more, it's very good. We are using these graphics to try to express the fact that the content of this is a statement of people's values. It intends to provide a vision for future actions to achieve those goals and insights and recommendations to eventually have sort of site-specific area tools and to act as a decision-making guide for this body, its future successors, and their commission and the community as a whole. We go to one more. So where we are in the process itself, we are towards the, towards the end, more towards the end than the start. It includes a considerable amount of public engagement beginning. Plan Commission has been spending most of the eighteen months focusing on the policy level, a document. During the summer, last summer, we started to get more specific about particularly downtown, the Hubbard Woods, Plaza area, the highway commercial districts and some areas within the village itself. The fall and winter, we have been working on the development of implementation strategies, which is the status that we're going to discuss tonight. Because the last time we met with you, we were dealing with the goals and objectives, which is a higher level that we'll talk about in a second. And now we're at the level of strategies. And then before we finish, there again is a process of taking it back out to the community before the adoption of the point. So it has its definition to better understand how this fits together. The goals are the top-level aspirational statements. They are not measurable. They may or may not be achievable in their ends, but it's towards which we aim. The objectives are more measurable, they are actions or policies in pursuit of the upper-end goal. And then the level that we're at and discussing tonight is strategies which are more specific. They may include specific projects identified to carry out those intermediate objectives. The structure that we provided for the plan itself has five big ideas and then sectioned those the end of land use itself. Stop for a second and say that that we recognize the same thing I did, which is that the profession has moved massively from when early as comprehensive plans were established and even the villagers early had their heads of plan in the mid-1970s was largely a land use only thing. The profession and communities have changed to recognize that in order to serve its public better, that there are issues of quality of life that can be addressed in the comprehensive plan, not just the regulation or the control of how properties are used. That is why we have five big ideas, the first one, which is build upon the Blenko's character. The second is integrate sustainability. The third is maintaining economic resilience. The fourth is share for this and support of the community. The fifth is deliver excellence in planning management and government. And then after we move through the strategic elements of the plan itself, there's more specifics on land use, so. So today, again, I wanted to recap the fact that there was a successful attempt of engaging the public in the discussion from the start so that we first learned about the concerns and issues that the community faces. And we included a series of, in the community, activities, including a pop-up stakeholder interviews of project website that has been operating consistently since the start of the process. We have had dialogues in which we both put out information and received information in response. We included vision polls, we have events at the Martin Luther King Day, a unity service event. We have had a number of opportunities and consistently hearing from the community about the interim documents that we posted. The key themes that we hear from the community who enhancing Blenko's uniqueness, livability and community character. And when we say enhance, it recognizes that we have unique livability and community character. And what we're trying to do is not remove that or destroy it, enhance it. Attract more vibrant users to downtown. To prepare for the immediate efforts to mitigate climate change, to accommodate a variety of housing opportunities and to maintain the efforts to be a welcoming community. So these are the things that we heard in our public discussion that led towards the adoption of in the draft form, the goals and objectives that lead up to this point, which is the discussion of the strategies within that. So if we can pause. Does the board have any comments and concerns about the community outreach today?
I'd like to add, there's additional community outreach, just not as important in that it's a community survey that we did in other form.
And it should also recognize the fact that early on, the Plan Commission engaged with the other boards and committees within the village to hear their perspectives and essentially act as an outreach of partners to hear multiple perspectives. So the, the topics of note in the current draft recognize issues that I think the FAG Commission spent more of its time and energy focusing on. And so I will walk through these if you want to stop me at some point or correction feature. Again, preservation of Blenko's character, uniqueness and historic architecture. And so there are a couple of, in your, using the number system in your packet, we go to page ten and twelve, define both the goals and objectives and then ultimately the strategies that point to these, to this issue of preservation of character and unique.
I make one quick comment here, just to color commentator. Everyone loves Blenko and everyone wants to keep it all together. One of the tensions that we had discussion is every time we try to accomplish some new elements, more diverse types of housing, changes to downtown, visiting what might happen in downtown. Come up with a lot of ideas and then we sit back for a second and we say, how would that change the character of Blenko? So you will see this tension and oftentimes in the document, we never say do this, do this, do this, let's see, consider, evaluate this. It's an advisory document, so it doesn't mean we weren't in favor of something or we were lukewarm. It meant, it meant that we recognized the complexity of the recommendations and that we're balancing a lot of interests. So we can't say in five years or seven years how each of these suggestions should play out. This is really the beginning point, the character of the community and how that affected a lot that came later in the document.
I think it speaks to the fact that if it's like the last comprehensive plan, it's going to be around for 20 years. That's not necessarily our objective here, but it is a, a document that has to be more timeless than site and time-specific. And that's part of the reason the commission wants items to be considered under the circumstances at the time. Another item of, of significant discussion at multiple committees, not just the Plan Commission, but the concern regarding the continuing loss of smaller homes in favor of new bigger homes. So there are strategies that mostly deal with providing the potential for incentives that would allow, if not encourage, people to maintain the homes as they are in the community, to reinvest in the buildings that already exist rather than simply looking at the opportunities for tear-down and be larger. Business district vitality and the, the ability for the heart of the community in our central business district to both provide services but also is a, a character element and a place in which we, we celebrate and have a tradition is a, is a critical element to why Blenko can be recognized and distinguished from other communities around. And so there will always be a concern about the activities of the first floor and the upper and tenth occupancies and how that contributes to foot traffic and the pedestrian environment and what makes this an attractive, walkable downtown. The quiet tree-lined streets and no strip commercial corridors. There's no effort here to try to take Green Bay Road and make it something that may deliver lots of sales tax in, in another community, but here the corridor is a window into the community and the rest of the community is attracted throughout because of the natural environment that it occupies. The perception of Blenko as a safe and welcoming community to the, to the effect that there were a number of questions of how we can make sure that people see it as an opportunity that is not an impediment to live and work and play in. But the strategies include, maybe even going back to the point where we used to have a welcome wagon, which is a commercial entity, but a process by which new, new residents are recognized and welcomed. The importance of sustainability, particularly resilience to climate change, but with consideration of physical reality. So the commission was concerned that we definitely want to be out ahead and recognizing that change is coming and to consider its potential impacts, but not try to necessarily be on the leading edge of, of technologies that could not be afforded by either the, the village at the Hall or the individual subject to those kinds of standards. So resilience, sustainability, but realism. Further topics, recommending review of zoning and land use standards regarding single-family, multifamily and commercial districts with an eye on, and then we give four major. So the, the fact is that land use and regulatory tools are a primary vehicle for executing policy towards the future of the community. Here are concerns that have been raised. Preservation of accessible and small single-family homes, including incentives and zoning around lot size, renovation versus tear-downs. There's a considerable effort to evaluate what we benefit or not of making those significant number of planes within the RC district in particular, which have minimal block lists that are greater than all of the lots that are in that district. Options for seniors who wish to age within Blenko, including options to either downsize or senior story options, first floor primary, et cetera. Where those are, there's a very limited number of places that I think that we can point to that could support that. Certainly within the immediate confines of the central business district. You have to say, like, as a plan that has preceded us, we have to consider the, the future of a public works building and potentially the Temple Court parking lot as, as opportunity. A desire for flexible and responsive regulatory tools like planning or development options for CVD, central businesses, certainly the Hubbard Woods area or future development sites such as Hoover State. Which is to say that I don't think, I'll let the chair speak to it, but I think it was a tool that would have been welcomed had it been available at the time that Hoover was subordinated. Significant focus on urban forum discussions, including walkability, first floor retail, appropriate parking solutions, building height and bulk and business district vitality and provide those mostly in the land use section, which is not in the five big ideas, but it's in the, in the chapter that follows of the beginning page thirty-four.
Before you turn the page, about plan, plan developments, obviously the problem with getting development approval was that the only tool we had was single-family zoning lots, regular in size. And the development community then gave us what we said you could have there, which was the twenty-nine lots. The idea of the plan development would be to have a tool that allows us to cluster homes to, to create more open space. Doesn't necessarily mean a lot more density, although it could. But I would also call your attention to the fact that we have the central business district in that sentence also. Because when we talked about the kind of development that could occur, we know that some of the areas in downtown have been acquired by a few individuals, some, there've been some assemblages, but those lend themselves to some kind of enhanced regulatory control. So if we're trying to create incentives that give all of these urban forum considerations they're hearing, you may have to have the flexibility to offer something back to developer and the best tool for that, we think, might be a plan development. So we didn't say, I'm sure you have to have a plan development, but again, something for us to consider, not only for a big vacant track someplace, but also for downtown.
So again, pause. Hopefully you had a chance to familiarize yourself. And, and this is an opportunity for us to say, are we right-trap? Are we clear enough in the language we're using? Recognizing that this very text heavy document is not the way the ultimate plan will come out. It's intended to be a, a document, not really a document. It intends to be a, a site on the web in which there is a significant amount of graphics to help explain some of the concepts that we're talking about and accessible to everyone in the community without having to come to pick up a copy of a dry written document. Are there important topics that need more consideration from those that we laid out?
So I don't want to, I don't want to talk a bunch here. I've been thinking since I got the job, I have about how could a comprehensive plan help the village where do its job as it looks forward. A lot of what the village does is, I'm going to say autopilot, not because the way it's done is autopilot, but because they have to do it. We're going to, we're going to keep our water plant working, we're going to keep our distribution system for water working, we're going to keep fixing our streets, we're going to keep doing public safety, all that stuff is going to happen. So what we need the plan for is for, you know, where, where we're maybe going to change something. And that's mostly not what we do, mostly we're just keeping it going. What, there have been a few times since I've had this job when we've had a question is, what are we doing in the future? And I thought, well, let's look and see what the plan says. And a couple of, a couple of things, and I'll give one example, is we had a consideration of a zoning change on Green Bay Road. And the question was, should this be multifamily? And I thought, well, maybe the plan will tell us what we should gating for. And it really didn't. So one thing I would, here's a goal. If it seems like a good idea, I don't think we're going to do it because maybe not everybody's going to be happy with the zoning change. But it would be helpful if our planners think, okay, this really ought to be, this is where we have multifamily. It'd be helpful if the plan says that. This, this is the goal, because we need, you know, multifamily. And another idea.
Stop, stop for a minute, because we do have area on Green Bay Road, it would lend itself to more than just single-family housing.
Yep.
The Plan Commission also, there are other things like consider accessory dwelling units, consider duplex or other kinds of. So in looking at how to get more housing in the village, the plan isn't have been just limited to what we think we have as multifamily at the moment. I think, I mean, I, Michael and Carol are here with us from the Plan Commission and Natalie's been coming to every meeting, Gil's been on the Plan Commission. Have, I think we have tried to identify exactly what you're saying, how are all of these types of opportunities? And that's what that language you're seeing there again, consider this, consider this. Because we're trying to say, this might be what we need to do. And maybe we have a gap in there, that's something you may say on closer reading, but we really tried.
Right, and by the way, I was, I was about to say, in addition to the sort of, we only have one Green Bay Road and they're almost all multifamily there, but they're and we would be respectful of, you know, we don't make zoning change, we're not really, really, really thinking about it. But there, I, I was going to mention the other ideas. One of my kids lives in Alameda, California, outside San Francisco. California has mandated for the whole state. If you, you know, locality, you may think it's single families zoning, but it isn't. And they do accessory dwelling. And my son and his wife, they do one. Neighborhood looks the same, but there's an accessory dwelling. They're using it themselves, but the idea is maybe more housing. And they, you know, there are no houses available with, now I think the number is probably like zero. And that might not be good. On the other hand, I recognize that anybody who lives next door to something might change, is going to be concerned about it. I would, so, but what's the goal? Put that in the plan and then we consider that as we look at a specific case, but.
Goal is more diversity than we currently have in the housing that's available. The, the fact is that there have been and there are currently some non-single-family homes within single-family neighborhoods that nobody notices. And that's what we want to get, is the compatibility and the consistency of the, of the character that currently exists. But maybe there's a building that looks just like a single-family home that provides it.
Want to do, want to do, it was like, yeah, there was a New York Times article about City of Jersey, and they made that change. And nobody particularly noticed, but all of a sudden there are more people and more property taxes and.
You can read the comments, because there were like eight hundred comments in that story.
I know, I know.
But this is what I'm saying too, but every time when we say consider this, it's also remember the very first thing, the character of the community. We're aware that every one of these is going to be many battle, something that's going to take a lot of thought, the time. This is just a point the way, and I, and they give you the advice to consider these things.
And I also further add that the commission was quite aware that there is no silver bullet any step. It's going to take little changes rather than one massive change.
Yeah, and by the way, I am not suggesting we abolish single-family zoning. We're not, we're not abolishing single-family zoning. We're not, I don't think the village is going to change the painstaking way we would look at any kind of zoning change. But it'd be nice to have a fight on what we should be thinking about doing.
Can I mention something as a member? I, I think our, in addition to multifamily, we spent a lot of time talking about conforming non-conforming lots and no size. And I think too, what we're seeing is smaller houses being torn down, taking up two blocks, which reduces density. And we talked about it in a way that's not just having more housing options, but also the diversity of housing. You have all the same type of housing, is that really economically resilient? So it's not just about zoning for multifamily, but how can we encourage? Like, how can we incentivize developers or home buyers to keep those smaller lots? And we had a lot of discussion about the economics of these things as well. So for example, one of the barriers to multifamily development is the amount of parking required for the buildings or just is it economically more profitable for developers to continue to tear down houses and build these bigger ones? So what I, I think that the economic forces aren't really going to be driving the changes that we're looking for. It really, a lot of it comes down to guidance and system selling.
I, I agree. One of the issues apparently is, and I, I, in connection with this project, I sort of learned, we have a bunch of sixty-foot lots. That's what the zoning says, but they're actually fifty-foot lots. But, and the real question is, why are we doing that? And, and that makes it really hard for somebody to, you know, do a fifty-foot lot again, because you can't, you know, so, so it pushes us to be bigger and that makes it harder to have a place for a geezer like me to move from one house to a smaller house.
And it's providing an incentive for people to take three lots and make two of them so that they can have two very large and remain conforming to that sixty-foot lot minimum.
Well, maybe, yeah, so it is, if there are things that we should really think about fixing, helps. Doesn't mean we're necessarily going to do it, and it definitely doesn't mean we're going to surprise everybody by doing it. But helps.
I think with spending a few minutes at least on the central business district and the other many comments that we heard focus on how do we make sure that the stores fill, that we keep the sidewalks filled with pedestrians and then we make use of potentially upper floors as other residential spaces. There's no suggestion that even the Temple Court parking lot, which looks like an opportunity site, that we would have simply residential there. The, the notion though is we want to have first floor retailing as much as we possibly can. And to encourage whatever zoning adjustments or reconsiderations for either the uses or the space definition of, of what can be done in certain spaces. But as importantly, also the commission is ready to start encouraging potentially a higher building height within the central core of the central business district. And particularly if you, if you look at, there's a, there's a graphic in here that I'm, it's a, turn to it. Your page thirty-three. If you look at the central block, it was number seven, that's because it is not directly adjacent to single-family homes. Like the block five, the block five that's shown, there is adjacent to single-family. But because seven is essentially surrounded by commercial, eight has the greatest opportunity to support upper story and potentially taller than the existing maximum height within the district.
And data nine as well.
And, and we also looked at, at both eight and nine, which is a sort of arbitrary line between eight and nine. It doesn't exist because the public works garage goes over that extension of village court, which was one of the concepts. Is if you redevelop that, that block south of Hazel, we really want to have a, a connection that Uh, that block south of Hazel, we really want to have a, a connection that. You can, with the, the commission spent a good deal of time talking about the scale of downtown and its appropriateness and. We don't like the potential for super block kind of, uh, characteristics in that business district just feels wrong. And so you look at the, the three yellow lines on that, that one that exists between Park and Tudor, it currently is there. Uh, we'd like some enhancement, thank you very much, but, um, if there were redevelopment that. Took the central block, which also includes the Village Court parking lot, a lot of seven. We wouldn't want to see that the block. The size of one building over the whole block that needs to be broken up and there needs to be a, a passing way through. And the same thing is if we can, if we can ultimately see the, the appropriateness of the redevelopment of the public works garage on. We also want to seriously consider the extension of Village Court down to. Again. Being respectful of the surrounding land uses, making sure that we're not trying to, uh. Courage very tall buildings in that, uh, central business district adjacent to existing residential. The, the, um. The potentials are there for investment over the next, uh. The, the, the period of the planning process. The planning period. We can't. Assume that it's going to look just like it is in twenty years, but if. Change occurs, there are places that can be better than others.
Might also want to point out that we spent a lot of time talking about. How, how the goods. And that's, that's, uh, that would be part of the venture, um. Back on page forty from the package.
Yeah. So. You may be aware of that, uh, there was a. Notification of the zoning, uh, last year so that the redevelopment of what had belonged. Of the, of the plaza could, uh. Could be redeveloped and. They applied for a development that exceeded the height of the previous, I believe it was thirty-two foot. As thirty, thirty-three foot actual height in that district. And the, the zoning commission, uh, allowed for a change of the, of the zoning there to accommodate. Kind of being, uh, greater height on that southern. Oh, that southern third or southern quarter of the site. It didn't address the, the balance. Against the, which, uh, developed that area, the Hubble is Plaza and the plan commission again looks at this as an opportunity. For greater height and the potential for upper story residential as another form of ability. If we had our drawl groups, we see redevelopment, pull the buildings to the street and that'll be so, uh, nineteen fifty-ish. Uh, even though it won awards, the nineteen fifties, it doesn't necessarily represent the, the character.
I like the reasons that you proposed. Talk to the owners.
Yeah. Of course, before I, I don't have the opportunity, I would like to, um, also just tell the board that. I think the plan commission has really benefited from Taylor's assistance throughout the process and, and me. Uh, and Francis's assistance from TSCA. And all the people on the plan commission who've been putting in a lot of time on this, even what you're looking at now is probably our fifth draft, just in terms of the language you're looking at. So thank you all.
The questions are out there. I'm not going to force the conversation. I guess that we're, we're looking for this. Does it sit right? Does it feel like you're addressing the issues that the community needs to address in the near future? What will come next? Once you feel comfortable in pushing us along. Is, uh, several things. First is that we, oh. Do need to, uh. Convert this into a more, uh, graphically oriented document so that there's more examples in here. The second is, we think it's, it's appropriate to take it back to the. Boards of commissions that gave us feedback in the early part of this process because they, uh. They gave us good advice. We want them to check our work. Uh, and then ultimately to take it to the community itself. Now. I am not a, uh, I am not often in favor of. Simply posting the document and waiting for the public hearing to get feedback. We think that there should be some. Less formal opportunity for the community to have an open house like, um. Place that's a lot more comfortable than forcing people to stand up at the podium and, and give their, uh, their three minutes of, of input. I'm glad you said that because, you know, one of the things. Um, first of all. Kudos to all. Really impressive piece of work in, in every respect, very well thrown out, very well written. And to the extent they are there in a sort. Of full illustrations. That said, I'm always concerned. About the concept of, of, you know. Progress without change. And for everyone that likes. An idea about doing something that will change, we talk about not changing the character. A lot of people substitute, don't change. Agent changes, changes character. And so you get a lot of people that want one thing. And then a lot of people that think about the same thing, oh. That's terrible. And what, I mean, you've been through this process, you've been through it before. What do you advise? In our thinking about it, dealing with and balancing different concerns of the different constituencies, the different people. That live in town, all these things.
I think they're balanced later in time. I think what this document does is give advice about what to think about. Without pre determining the outcome. Because if we just simply said in the document, this is what we need to do, well, then. First of all, we'd probably be wrong and we'd upset a bunch of people. So, um, we're not looking for consensus on the solutions. Looking for consensus on the questions.
I have one other question. Uh, since you did talk to an awful lot of people. And got a lot of feedback in preparing this. I noticed the word safe. This comes up a lot. And my question is, you have any color of the context that. People concerned about. What?
It was simply that when we tried to think about what was so lovely and wonderful about Red Cow. In the course of our conversations, a number of. Black missions said, you know, one of the great things of this is that you feel safer. You don't feel safe in a lot of other communities. So we, it's like the water you swim in, you forget that that's the water you're in. I think, I don't know if anyone else from the black mission has a different. Think on that, but that was it. It was just simply a recognition of. How we feel about the community, not a, not a concern.
Very short discussion. We all agree. I want to make sure there was no hidden problem.
Thank you. So, um. I think. Yeah, I would nudge you to be. I'm not, I'm not looking for directives. We should have. More of this, sorry. But at the same time. Maybe a, a little bit more than just a question. So a, it, it could be a goal. Subject to. All the things that were substituted.
Now, we have time to go back and look at it. And I think you'll see that the, the goals are general, the strategies are pretty specific. And I think what you're looking for, you'll see in the strategies.
So let me ask one other question. Um. It's not to the commission as a whole. Maybe to each of the commissioners. Is there any? Is there anything that you think? I really wish we had done, talked about this. Talked about it more. Or said more.
I'm going to look at the, I've been serving looking on the commission, anything in mind? That we haven't talked about a lot?
No, I mean, I, I think what you saw. In the presentation here, the topics that we kept coming back to. There were certainly areas covered here that we thought belonged in a strategic plan, but we thought that. Lincoln did a great. Zalmeri doing a great job, for example, governments, you know, that could part of the budget, but. We are, the majority of our time spent was on land use. Housing, particularly housing for seed in aging community or is. And. So in really the emphasis that we want there to be sufficient direction so that. The trustees have sufficient. Plan to go back to and say, this is what the community wants. We had very extensive conversations. Most of our meetings went past the two hours we had planned. And I would say that we have a pretty lively group of people who speak up and stick their mind. I don't know if you have anything to add there, but I, I feel like we. We really exhausted the areas that we made thought were most important.
And I think we pride hard not to. Shy away from controversial issues. Sort of like what Tristan does. And it became a matter of drafting to say, well, Bruce says, well, we're saying it's suggestive, we're not making the rules. You guys are, your folks are, so. It's more a matter of here's some things that we should be thinking about. And you know, it's, it's difficult trying to plan away the next ten years. You know, the biggest problem is unanticipated consequences. Who knows what's going to happen, you know, because. We did the best we could to try and raise, raise the issues that you should be thinking about.
You know.
And we don't have solutions for everything, but we have the issues on the table.
Just one other reminder I thought about as, as Michael was saying that, um. We could have been, this document could have been a lot longer. But in some cases, we took a shorthand and said, okay. Work on implementing the suggestions of the sustainability group. And so we know we have, you can see links to the sustainability plan. There's documents that are a hundred pages long for the suggestions. So we didn't repeat them all here. And every time that we had. The work of another committee in the village to fall back on, we said. Don't forget, look at this, try to implement this. And I think that's. That's why the document may appear shorter because we didn't try to repeat what everyone else had already done.
Okay, my, just after, and then you mentioned the strategic plan. Um, and thanks for sharing that you will go back around and ask everybody if we did our homework correctly. I'm just going to recommend. Um, so we have our strategic plan retreat coming up in June. We're embarking on that effort, um, so in hoping at the end we will. Also hear maybe the final, get another final revision after you go around. I was like, this is my question, it's not the last time we're going to see this. So I guess then we can recommendation if we could just kind of go back on. And then also I hear a lot about this being, I mean, all documented in years. Can we, can we implement a. Statement here about revisiting it, um, once every two years, something like that, um, that's something that done.
We just hope it finishes by two years.
How long does that, can we revisit it and, and make amendments? So it's just saying it so it doesn't feel so permanent.
The fact is that the. The time horizon to look forward, it may be twenty years, but it shouldn't. Be that long before you reconsider. Are we moving in the right direction? It's common to look at it in the three to five year period after adoption. Some communities will annually, uh. The plan commission will take an annual look at the conference plan and see what did we accomplish? Let's. Higher on our list. Now, what I didn't, uh, I didn't highlight is the fact that. We think. Following these chapters, there ought to be a separate chapter on implementation, which gives some strength to what are the priorities? What's, what's more important amongst these various important things?
We will read this.
Yes, well, you know, we want the document to live online and we think that with hyperlinks and things like that, the document can be. Not such a static document in future.
But I will definitely conclude the encouragement for regular review of, of the document itself.
At tonight's village board meeting, we're going to be. So maybe go for it, referring to the zoning. Or zoning commission. First floor uses. There are some hints in the draft about first floor uses. Is there anything? That the zoning commission planners want to tell us if we have parked on this in an hour?
There was considerable debate about whether or not we would recommend in this document a, um. An encouragement of retailing off over, um, other service businesses on the first floor. It was, it was fairly unanimous. I mean, I'm wrong that. We didn't want to see residential on the first floor, but that. If you're making recommendations about retail versus non-retail uses, and I'll include. Entertainment and restaurants along with retail. That we should be, where possible, uh, encouraging those uses in the larger spaces and the non-retail uses only take on the very smaller spaces.
And was there? Was there a suggestion? Uh, because I think we sort of got one from Taylor as to how we, you know, what, what's the fix? I, I, I think a fix is to. Make it, uh, you know, it's, it's going to be retail or restaurant or something like that unless there's a special use. I think, and I think somewhere neighbors can do that. Is that something the zoning? Mission working out a plan to encourage us? And I ask because. We're being asked in that one.
I will, I will add something about our discussion about that in particular, if we're going to be. Talking about our open minds in this, we, we, we don't want another bank. So this is like, what we talked about or a personal thing is. Wow, the app properties has really great real estate, but it's not driving any traffic to such a great corner. It's a great billboard for them. But it's not really serving the community. So we want. First floor space to be something that adds to the vibrancy of downtown, adds to the. And walkable nature drives business within the town. But if you're have, you have some, you know, the app. There's nothing on that properties. I don't want to put the doubt, but it, even you don't have people walking in and out of that building. They're, they're there briefly when you need to be. Kind of lingering the downtown area. So I don't know if that's all just retail specifically. It's something for when the next bank sees an open space and there's no reason to not let them. You know, rent the space. We'd like more grammaters around that sort of thing. And that's more variety.
How do you balance, what if, what if properties bring in ten x the tax revenue than the next coffee shop? I'll take out properties a little bit. I mean, so how do you balance the, the extreme amount, when you look at, you know, two percent in land use for. You know, for, for things that are non-residential taxes versus creating more vibrant, diversifying tax base. I mean, we, we lose one auto dealer from where he's troubled, which can easily happen.
Auto dealer sell stuff. I mean.
I'm saying like, I'm saying like, where I said, why do I think, I think, so how do we, what, what biggest thing is how do we diversify our tax base? Well, you know, we kind of whiffed on the pot thing and they stuck it right on our corner. And, uh, you know, so.
Don't blame the zoning board.
I'm with you. I was, look, I was one pushing that we should actually do, do the dive on it. But I mean, that's what I was gonna say. How do, how do we?
So I would, I would answer that, you know, we looked at this and said, okay, um, we had a long discussion about this, um. What does it mean to have only retail uses? Because a lot of the uses in the village are personal service uses and they actually contribute a lot to. The livability of talent. People coming to town, many of those small shops don't necessarily generate a lot of tax revenue. So I think the plan commission would probably say as a whole, you can't only concentrate on tax revenue in the downtown or you lose the character of downtown.
You can also not concentrate on it at all.
Right. And we never said you can't, you won't avoid this balancing. So if you, if you want to know where we came out, it's balanced correctly. That's your job, that's your job.
Our, our early drafts of, of, of comments and suggestions on the highway frontage were to consider what. Future uses might occur if the, if we lost one or more of the. Of dealerships and the commission said, we need to go out of our way to make sure that we don't lose them.
That's right. It's like that.
Just to go back to the ground floor, I, I think that it's. There's nothing in there that gives a specific direction about. You know, take option one, we'll see later tonight, pose option two, three, four. Um, page nineteen, this is the A level objective. You have seen these old businesses that contribute to vibrancy and encourage additional spending. Other nearby businesses. Want to attract and let its business types, maybe unique food options, casual. Family go to eat in a bunch of restaurants, fitness uses. Um, next page, page one of your job. Strategy, which is a bit more. Specific strategy, A, floor and steady wave for the village incentivize or attract restaurants. And other activity generators to increase foot traffic. Vibrancy and sales taxes. So there's not a, there's not a specific policy. So there's not a, there's not a specific policy recommendation. If it was recommended by, I'd say, I don't think there was ever a unanimous. Point of view on this from the plan commission, and that's, that's the level of specificity that that's in the thought. I think there was a consensus that some of the debtor uses should not be predominant. And we were trying to get it.
On the first floor.
Yes, on the first floor, we were trying to get it out with this language.
True.
That's helpful, like I said, that's helpful for the next hour. As we're looking at.
My motion to adopt the plan. Sorry. Two and three kind of go together. Two is, is there anything that's not strong enough?
Well, it goes back to the early part of this conversation, that the, that the commission uh. Wants there to be a greater opportunity for diverse basic housing. Uh it's not trying to wholesale uh encourage the rezoning of the of the village to something other than this. The fundamental structure of predominantly single family, but where uh where some other of housing types. Can be encouraged without having a negative impact on the neighborhood that that surrounds it. Let's look at how we do it. Um certainly, there are specific sites. Most presidents mentioned the Green Bay Road is as uh prime, if you will, for uh multi-family, the zoning is there. Um we don't make it easy, even within the zoning, um. We have to make certain that the bulk and height and other dimensional requirements allow for market driven forces to make good decisions. Uh in those sites, uh there are some sites that are um that are more opportunities of.
In the Green Bay Road quarters, it's. The plan has extremely drafted. Encourages revisiting zoning regulations along Green Bay Road. To make it easier to build multiple, that's that's in there as a recommendation. Especially. Pass it into a couple sectors in there, and especially north of, north of South. There's, there's stronger encouragement to make it easier.
Yeah, North of Washington.
North of Washington is that.
We have like three corridors.
It's three.
We did talk about it. You will, that that seem to be more practical, more um. More likely to be compatible with this front.
So when that, I I you know, I read the local stuff, and when that, it looks like they just authorized a big. Uh new. Building, which is gonna be sort of mixed use, I think.
You can bet one on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that? Are, is that something that Glencoe should be amenable to? Um and if we should, and like, when that, this is not a radical, this is not people's problem, but when that, when that. Um it's, so.
That wouldn't matter.
Should. It, and if we should be amenable to this, do we need to change anything so we can be amenable?
Yes, I think that was uh part of what we were pointing at at both uh Hubbard Woods Plaza and. The downtown, I mean, uh you know, when when that is back in the middle of the primary. Downtown district, and it, it is um. It's been pared back significantly compared to the other three proposals that preceded it, but the point is that. It's in a place where the height and the density can absorb, like, that there are only a limited number of places. That can be, I mean. In the central process, so you're into it, in Hubbard Woods.
But I think, and I think the way the comprehensive plan's been written, is we have thought about that type of development and kind of identified. Where, with, you know, you know, their development, whether it's in Hubbard Woods. Or in the different, you know, the few different locations here in our downtown area. But I think it's exactly the type of thing that we are thinking about, because it is mixed use.
You know, to, to get to the point where something like that could be built in Hubbard Woods or downtown, get to the point where. Some of the goals and objectives they've seen there, for those areas, you realize that's, that is, you know, changes in the local, both of those. Changes that allow increased titles or what's there now. And we're seeing this, this graphics is forty five feet in Hubbard Woods, right now it's thirty three feet. Or the the bulk of that side, eighty or so. There's, there was a recon, a recognition by the commission that to get a development like that in downtown Glencoe. It's, it would be pretty tricky, I think, to pay for. Parking that we needed, underground openings extremely expensive, without zoning changes that would allow new recital. So those, those goals that we see here, uh that that's the direction the board wants to take in three weeks' goals. The way to get there is gonna be zoning changes for sure.
Tell, so, tell us what they are, tell us what they are in the, in the plan, doesn't mean we're doing it, definitely doesn't mean. We're doing it. At, you know, midnight, not letting our residents know, because people are gonna tell, we want to make sure people have a chance to tell us what they think and what they're worried about. We always, always take that seriously, but at the same time. Um we don't want to let. Stuff happen and then all of a sudden they're back on the ground, there's nothing to do about it.
If if you're gonna try and implement some of this sooner rather than later, there probably are three or four topics that we really thought about. That almost need a referral from the board to the zoning commission soon.
Okay, so tell us what, tell us what they are, you know, we're doing first floor uses tonight. But there are probably others. And and so tell us what they are and tell us what you think the options are, which might be. A special use permit or something like that, so we're not just giving a blank check, we're just saying. If there's a good plan, we can look at it, if if the developer has something that actually makes sense.
So so just an example again, we we talked about what, what should be the maximum height, let's say, right on. In the central business district where we have this opportunity. Well, I think what, four stories, I don't have it in feet, but I think, I think that's four stories.
With underground park.
Right, with underground park.
In the first floor park.
So we said, well, would it ever be appropriate to be five stories? Well, maybe not, maybe with a setback, maybe just a part of it even, maybe something like that, well then. Then there was discussion, should the plan actually say that? Because you're you're looking for direction, and we said. We don't really want to give developers, we don't want to say you can get up to this already, and that's why we fell back on, think about a plan development. So if you refer this to zoning commission, zoning commission starts up in a plan development, they may also have to then wrestle with. That point, it won't just be in a, a plan, I have to wrestle with, what is the height that we're authorized to go up to? So this is, when you make a referral, like, it could take them a while to go through these issues, get public comment, come back to, so it's not. All of these, every one of these trade-offs is gonna require a balancing of things.
That's our job.
And then, you know, the same goes for, when we're talking about it, Green Bay Road, making it. Eliminating some other hurdles to small scale. Multi-family there, that's, that's gonna be. Rewriting basically the article, part of the zoning. The way it's written right now, you can do multi-family, but there are significant hurdles about in the left. So that's, I think that's something that the commission, without saying. You're supposed to, so the zoning car should be here, like, there's, without getting very specific about it. Commission is, is comfortable to be.
And I would mention the third place be uh, as an example, Cooper would. To most uh developers would have, would like a, a potential opportunity to save all the trees and and clusters of buildings in the middle. We didn't have the tool, we didn't have to do that.
We're gonna find out within a couple of months, whether it's gonna be twenty nine single family lots, or it's not. If it's not. Blank slate, blank slate with uh. Uh with a lot of, you know, there just everything starts over. We'll see.
Is it, um, is there a reason we didn't consider, like, short term, because we spoke, he talks about this, one of the study areas, or you mentioned Hoover?
But we didn't, um. We thought that the the concept of a plan development could apply to any large track, so we didn't like trying.
Alright.
Identify specific tracks.
Okay.
I don't want them to think we're looking to bulldoze. We're us.
I wanted to see maybe we can make some additional reference or. We talked about diversified, but tax base is just a general statement, maybe we could make some more of those types of statements to kind of come out.
We'll take all these comments back, because this isn't done yet either.
Yeah, exactly.
Just not understanding what I said earlier, there'll probably be two more.
Yeah.
Versions of this.
Uh very, thanks to the zoning. Mission members and. Visitors of and staff for for doing all of this, this is. It's really important, and we appreciate the advice, so keep going. Anybody, any of the trustees have anything else they want to add? Or say? Or we send them back to keep going?
I'll just say, I think Bruce has done a great job, he got to thank everybody, but we didn't get to thank Bruce, he's been.
One more slide, so just uh, we will incorporate the feedback we hear and feel free to. Email Taylor and myself, that we thought, I think, that I know it's. It's your leisurely reading through it again.
Okay.
Um we want to incorporate feedback from the boards and the committees uh. Import the plan document and graphics into the interactive online format that ultimately. Let's say, community sees, communicate proposed plans to the community of document feedback, and then ultimately. Both first a, a less than public hearing opportunity for a more informal uh public comment period. And then uh a a public hearing. That will make a recommendation to bring it back to you for adoption.
All sounds sensible to me. Board members have anything else? Okay, um. Is there any other business for the committee of the whole? So rather than adjourn, we have a closed session. So um as long as we have a few minutes, maybe we can do our closed session now. So we have a motion to. Close this part of the, of the public session in the hall. And go into a closed session meeting concerning section two, C two correction bargaining. Is there such a motion?
There's such a motion.
Perfect.
Uh all in favor?
No, no, you need to roll.
We need a roll call, okay, roll call.
Trustee Hallwax, trustee Lister, trustee Neapolos, trustee Underdon, trustee Rubin, trustee Scott.